Ready to start?
Yep.
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Nancy Bowder, Acting City Manager, Acting Mayor. Already starting bad. I've done this before. I totally, totally am losing it here. We will start the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I forgot to remind you that meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM and midnight, and available for viewing on YouTube. And to please turn off and silence all cell phones during the meet. The first thing on the order today is the proclamation for World Polio Day. Come on up, Rotarians. Whereas Rotary International, founded on February 23, 1905 in Chicago, Illinois, USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, the Gates Foundation, and GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance, to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than $2.6 billion and countless volunteer hours to protecting nearly 3 billion children in 122 countries. And Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Gates Foundation. And these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas in addition Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $10 billion to the effort. And there are many members of the Rotary Club of Leavenworth who sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in our local community and abroad. Leavenworth Rotarians have committed their time, talent, and treasure to continue support of Polio Plus until polio is finally eradicated from the earth. Now therefore, I, Nancy Bowder, Mayor Pro Tem, City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim October 24, 2025, as World Polio Day.
Here, Bowder, we appreciate your support. We're on the Polio Kirk video.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I have a proclamation too. Somebody's taking pictures. Pardon? Good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for the gift. Thank you. Next proclamation, Military Retiree Appreciation Day. Norm Gretchen is here with us today. Whereas military retirees have served our country faithfully in times of peace and war, and whereas military retirees have made significant sacrifices in defense of our freedom and liberty, and whereas a large number of military retirees and their families live, work, and play in the Leavenworth community, and whereas the Fort Leavenworth Garrison will conduct a Retiree Appreciation Day on October 25, 2025. Now therefore, I, Nancy, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, do hereby join the Fort Leavenworth Garrison in recognizing the contributions, sacrifices, and loyalty of military retirees in our community by proclaiming October 2025 as Military Retiree Appreciation Day.
I didn't ask the Rotary to speak two words, too. She didn't say anything.
Yes.
Now, can I say a few words?
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, on behalf of the over 20,000 military retirees that live in the 20-mile radius of Fort Leavenworth, I'd like to say thank you for honoring us with this proclamation. Leavenworth City and Leavenworth County and the other cities in the county are great places to live, or we wouldn't still be here. I have to say this right now. We don't know for certain that on the 25th, we're going to be able to have Retiree Appreciation Day. As we all know, there's a shutdown. Many of the people that support that event have been put on furlough. Hopefully, that will be over with, and we'll be able to have it. But if we don't have it this year, we will certainly have it next year. So again, thank you very much and appreciate your support.
Thank you for all the good stuff. I forgot to ask if the Rotarians have anything they'd like to say this evening.
We just thank you for your support.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I should ask you guys to speak. Okay, next item on the agenda, old business, consideration of previous meeting's minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes from September 23, 2025, regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
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 Passed. Second item on the agenda, second consideration ordinances. Second Consideration Ordinance 8270, adopting Leavenworth County Sanitary Code for Private Sewage Disposal Systems.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem Commissioners, this ordinance was presented at the September 23rd meeting, and it would have the city adopt the county sanitary sewer code for the installation of private sewer disposal systems within the city. There have been no changes or comments received since first reading, so we are ready for the roll call vote.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
No questions.
Hearing none. This will take a roll call vote. Please begin with Commissioner Martin.
Martin, aye.
Bowder, aye.
Wilson, aye.
Hengula, aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance, number 8271, special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling at 510 Kiowa Street.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem Commissioners, this ordinance was also presented at the September 23rd meeting, and would allow a two-family dwelling at 510 Kiowa, and would bring the non-conforming structure into legal conforming status. There have been no changes or comments received since the planning commission meeting, nor first consideration of the city commission, so this is also ready for a roll call vote.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this?
No.
Again, this was a house that had been two dwelling, and then went to one, and now it's going back to two.
Right.
So, roll call vote. Please begin with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
Wilson, aye.
Bowder, aye.
Martin, aye.
Roll call passed. Next item, new business, public comment. Is there any?
Yes, we did have three people signed up.
Okay. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. In the interest of time, we ask that groups wishing to speak limit their public comment to one presenter. This is an opportunity for the city commission to hear the thoughts of the public prior to conducting official city business. The mayor, city commission, and city staff have been asked not to respond to those giving public comment, and action may not be taken by the commission or on public comment items. The mayor may direct staff to follow up with specific individuals after the meeting. When speaking, please state your name and address. A sign-up sheet will be provided in the commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. Okay?
First, we have Claire Neely.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Claire Neely. I'm here, oh, did my address?
You gave your address, too.
719 Kiowa.
Okay.
So I'm here to talk about Oxford House. We, I recently opened Women's Oxford House here in Leavenworth, and was kind of introduced to the need through Leavenworth Attainable Housing. And so over the past year, I think that that's kind of been a real need, you know, that's been talked about. So over the summer, we kind of put it all together and made it happen. So now we're here, and we're working on opening a men's house, and then hopefully a women's with childrens to follow that as well. And I know that, I think you, when we had the, I also worked for Community of Hope, and so I think when we had the Homeless Task Force meeting, you know, we talked about, you know, all the different needs and concerns, and I didn't speak up about it, but I think that it's a big, it's a big part of it, so that, you know, we'll never solve homelessness. But, you know, a big piece of that is the mental health aspect, and then also, you know, addiction. And, you know, the addiction part is more of a symptom to, you know, the bigger problem. What Oxford does is provide that safe place for people who are addicts and experiencing, you know, all of the things that are associated with that, and then provides a place for them to heal and grow, and really, you know, work on their recovery. And then also, you know, it's suggested, and, you know, there's support to address things like the mental health aspect of it. And, you know, so with all of those things in place, you know, really, it just teaches people how to be a better person, and, you know, how to transition back into being a productive member of society. And I think that those are all, you know, important things. And we're just really excited that this is happening, and we've been given the opportunity, you know, for this and to grow on it. You know, I've seen it change people's lives in so many ways, and not just the members who live in Oxford, but all of the family and friends that are associated with those people, you know, that live in Oxford, because, you know, it, it's just, it's like, it's where the magic happens, you know? And we're all just people. So I'm really nervous, and...
Do I understand that you have an open house or something coming up?
So we are having a grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony on the 31st from 11:00 to 1:00, and I believe that you are all on the invite list, so you should be receiving invites here very soon. And, you know, I think on there, we'll ask that, you know, any office members, or, you know, anyone that you, you know, think would benefit from attending, you know, everyone is welcome. So we just really want to, you know, bring awareness to the community and, you know, show everyone that we're an asset, you know? So that's all. Thank you. Thank you very much.
God bless, and thank you.
Next up is Dani Redman.
Dani Redman?
Hi, good evening, Madam Acting Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Dani Redman, and I live in Shenandoah neighborhood of Leavenworth. You all might have seen my husband's red and gold signs around town. They're the ones with the sunflowers on them with the chief collars. I promise, I'm not here to complain about hot potholes or traffic lights, and I just want to take a moment and tell you about something really good. Last week, our city manager, Scott Peterson, gave a presentation at one of my volunteer organizations that really stuck with me. And it's especially the part about the new Leavenworth text alert system called Alert Sense. I didn't know it existed until last week, but my gosh, what a smart, forward-thinking, powerful tool to keep our community connected and safe. It's one of those ideas that didn't make headlines, but I think that it really, really matters, and it shows care, foresight, and a genuine commitment to protecting our residents. And for that, I want to say thank you. I was surprised to learn that only 300, and now 301 people have joined us so far. And that's out of a city of more than 37,000. We really, 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 really need to do better than that. This is too important to go unnoticed. So I'm speaking tonight to offer two small friendly suggestions. First, maybe we should include a short blurb and a sign-up link at the bottom of every city water bill for Alert Sense, since it goes out to households. And second, consider sending out a simple postcard to every household, just letting people know that this service exists. And for anyone watching at home tonight, please go right now and sign up at public alertsense.com, or look at the city commissioner's homepage. And that goes for the 20 people or 30 people that are sitting in this room. Take out your phone and go to public alertsense.com. I am so very passionate about this, because I really, really think that this is a public service announcement, and this could really save your life sometime. It's free, it's easy, and it could make all the difference in emergency. I want to close by thanking Mr. Peterson, Ms. Penny Holler, and their teams for their behind-the-scenes work on this. This program is a quiet victory for public safety and for the kind of leadership that keeps Leavenworth strong. Alert Sense is something to be proud of, and it's a big win for Team Leavenworth, so join me in spreading the word on this. Thank you for the ti, for your time and for all that you do to serve our city. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Redman. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for promoting that. We need to do better promoting that. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, y'all. I'm Ashley Pitts. I live and am registered to vote here in Leavenworth. If you want my specific address, please speak to me individually after this. I am here to talk to everybody today about opportunities to improve the way citizens access information...
Do you live here in Leavenworth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I need to know that. Thank you.
Opportunities to improve the way citizens can access information about political campaigns locally. So I, as a voter, have been finding it a little bit difficult to find out not just what the candidates' names are, but what they represent. I wasn't able to find even searching online what, who was running for what office, until after I was able to find one of the specific names of the offices that was being opened up for election, but that was part of the information I was looking for. This took longer than I expected, and I actually also had to get help. It should be easier to find that information online. I also would like to find whatever webpage that we have, that easily accessible webpage, with a link to the candidates' webpages. And I also believe that it would be beneficial for voters if we hung up posters in different government-owned buildings throughout town that have a webpage and a QR code linking to that website. It also would be beneficial for drivers and even pedestrians if we limited the number of distractions that could lead to auto accidents by preventing political yard signs from being put up in any intersection with a speed limit of 30 miles per hour or more. I personally have been distracted numerous times at the intersection between Spruce and 10th, and I would hate to see that lead to an accident. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is mayor's appointments. Oh, I thought you were timing me there. I move to reappoint to the Community Corrections Advisory Board Patrick Kitchens and Marcia Jackson to terms ending October 16, 2027.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consider special event, street closure request for the Christmas Market event.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem Commissioners, we're here tonight as a request to close two blocks of Delaware Street and two blocks of Fifth Street on Saturday, December 6, 2025, for the Leavenworth Christmas Market. City of Leavenworth has received a special event application and street closure request form from the event organizer for the Leavenworth Christmas Market. The proposed street closure would be from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM to allow for setup and teardown of the event itself. The closure would include the 400 to 600 blocks of Delaware Street and Fifth Street from Shawnee Street to Cherokee Street. This is the third request for this particular event. So on top of the request for the approval, we are looking for some consensus from the commission, if that in future years, the event continues to happen in the same footprint and within the same timeframe, so same one-day structure, that this would be something that we could review and potentially approve on an internal level, and so constantly coming back to the commission if this continues five, 10 years.
Yeah.
So just to recap, we're looking for approval of the street closure request, and then just general consensus, and looking forward in future years.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah. Probably the city clerk. Is there any ordinance that requires that a request like this go through the whole process?
There's no ordinance that does. Our street closure policy that we put together in, I believe, the end of February of 2025 states that a request may or could come to the city commission, that it could also be done internally. And speaking with the city manager, he requested that this year's request did come forward to you guys, just this being his first year with it. And then we did discuss, you know, how do future years look if the footprint and the events stay the same? And so he said he would prefer your consensus on, you know, handling this internally.
Yeah.
Staff feels comfortable doing that. The police chief, I've spoken with him about it, as long as it remains roughly the same.
Sure. Yeah, I could see where if it changed, we would want to...
Yes, absolutely. If it wanted to expand, you know, we'd want to obviously bring that back to the commission to make sure that was something they wanted to do. But like I said, in the same footprint, we have, you know, five, if this is year seven, year eight, do we want to keep bringing this back to you guys?
Yeah. I would, I would just want to know, I mean, heads up earlier in the year, if it's still going to be the plan, you know? I would imagine somebody would know six months ahead of time if they're going to have a major event like that, you know, downtown. So that would be my only thing, not assume, but...
Right. Right. That'd be good. Any other questions or comments?
No, I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city commission approve the street closure request for December 6, 2025, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
Aye. Pass four to one, order zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider the award of the 2025-26 salt bid.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. This item is to consider our salt purchases for 25-26 winner season. This procurement is up to 1,000 tons of rusty icing salt. The city has been working with the county in the past. The county bids the project, and we're able to buy off the county project. It's been the same every year. I do get a lot of questions about how much we think the winner's going to be this year. So if you see on the map, we're somewhere between zero and 250 inches of stone.
That's a good one.
So the bid this year went to Central Salt at Alliance, Kansas, for $58.67. We are currently full, our salt dome is full, and we would only purchase what we need to keep up the supply. So it could be 500 tons, it could be 750, it could be 1,000, depending on the winner. Staff recommends the city commission approve the Leavenworth County bid for rock salt at $58.67 a ton for up to 1,000 tons from Central Salt LLC.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Any, any other questions other than weather-related?
I move that we...
Yep. Did you have a question?
No, I didn't. Sorry, Nancy. Yep.
Did you have a question?
No, no, I didn't. No.
Then I move that the city, that we approve the Leavenworth County bid for rock salt at $58.67 a ton for up to 1,000 tons from Central Sort Salt LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bless you.
Bless you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of the 2026 landfill service contract.
This is for a refuse disposal contract with waste management. The city does dispose, on average, of about 11,500 tons of municipal solid waste each year. In addition, we do dispose of about 5,000 tons of special waste, which is flood and grit from our wastewater treatment plant. The city has been using waste management in Shawnee since 2019. The city will occasionally haul the Leavenworth County Transfer Station. However, there have been numerous times during the week that the transfer station is unacceptable, unavailable to accept our waste. The rates at the transfer station are significantly higher than waste management, so we do limit our usage. The county's rate for 25 is $68 a ton, with an additional increase possible in 2026. In 2026, the cost to dispose of our waste at waste management landfill is increasing from $33.39 a ton to $35.06 per ton, and special waste from $56.04 to $58.84. Both equate to about a 5% increase over 2025. The city is currently exploring several options for solid waste moving forward. These include constructing a new city-only consolidation station to be located at the old landfill site, and also assuming ownership of the existing transfer station. At this time, a contract with waste management is needed for 2026. Staff does recommend the city commission approve a one-year contract with waste management for refuse disposal. The costs for 2026 are $35.06 per ton for municipal solid waste and $58.84 for solid waste. And be happy to answer any questions. You and I.
Any questions, commissioners?
No. It's going up like you predicted.
Yeah. Discuss. I will entertain a motion.
I move for the city commission to approve the one-year contract with waste management for refuse disposal, the cost for 2026 at $35.06 a ton for municipal solid waste at $58.84 per ton for special waste.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting, Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consider award of bid for Chestnut and Sixth Avenue Stormwater Repair Project.
Thank you. This is a construction services contract with Leavenworth Excavating and Equipment Company, or Lexico, for the Chestnut and Sixth Avenue stormwater repairs. The stone arch located in the middle of Chestnut Street, just east of Sixth Avenue, currently has several large areas of missing stones and mortar. The city received notice from an adjacent property owner back in 2023 of a large sinkhole behind the inlet at this location. Upon investigation, staff found the arch had partially collapsed. At that point, we did close the roadway. The city contracted with Wilson and Company to design the repairs at this location. The project consists of replacing the failing arch, along with several storm pipes to tie into it. The plans and specs were developed by city staff at Wilson and Company. The project was advertised for bid on our Bonfire Uno platforms, and bids were opened October 15th. Two bids were received. The low bid is from Lexico Construction, and they have completed a number of projects here in the city. The cost for the contract is $204,426.8. The engineer's estimate was $309,000. As Lexico was the low bid, and under the engineer's estimate, staff recommends that the city commission authorize the mayor to sign a construction services contract with Lexico for the Sixth Avenue and Chestnut Stormwater Repairs in the amount of $204,426.8. And if possible, we'd like a change order authority for the city manager not to exceed $50,000. In addition to that, we will find things in this project that we're not anticipating.
It's a rough one. I... It's a rough one. I just have a question, and then I'll open it up. Will this cover the house where the sinkage occurred?
This won't go up...
Down the street.
That won't go up this far.
It won't go up as far as that house?
This gets right now on the south side of the street.
It just opens up that street then, basically?
Opens up the street. We have, the gentleman that lives on the south side was mowing and about disappeared into a hole. And so when we went through and looked at it, you could be in the culvert looking up and see the sky. And so we're fixing that, and we're fixing the pipes that tie into it just right in that general area. We're not going up to the area where the sinkhole is.
So that sinkhole is going to remain there?
At this point, yes.
Okay. We'll talk about that later.
When will this be done?
They have a start date of right around the first of December. Once the contracts are approved, we look at shop drawings for these structures that are needed for this. And right now, it takes about six weeks for those structures to be delivered. So you're kind of looking around the first or second week in December. But it should go very quickly once the roads close.
It depends on if we get that 250 inches of snow.
Yeah, right.
Right.
So we have, we'll have that street open. Chestnut will be able to be opened.
Correct.
But you'll still have the sinkhole on, is there one on either side?
Right now, them sinkholes on the south side, there's a small sinkhole on the south side of the street. Those will all be fixed in that localized area. The one that a gentleman came and talked to a couple of weeks ago was a very large sinkhole within the same drainage basin, but that's not part of this project.
Is that anything we're looking at coming up?
We're actually looking at that older drainage way there. There's a number of issues. There's collapsed CMP which caused this one, this corrugated little pipe. When we went in and looked at it, the backfill for that pipe was concrete slabs and bricks. That's something that probably the developer did at the time. It was installed not to city. We actually want to try to get something before the spring rains.
Okay.
Because we do have a lot of blockage in the area that will cause some issues.
Okay. Well, I would like to continue talking about that at another time. We'll look at this project right now. I don't have any other questions on this. Any other questions? Anybody else?
No. Madam Mayor, I move to approve that we authorize the mayor to sign a construction services contract with Lexico for the Chestnut and Sixth Avenue stormwater repair in the amount of $204,426.8. We change order authority to the city manager not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
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 Pass. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Consider Approval to Lease Camera Replacements for the Police Department. Chief Kitchens, good to see you.
Acting City Manager, I mean, Mayor.
Acting City Manager, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, and Commissioners, the police departments before the governing body this evening to discuss with you the replacement camera project that we've been working on for some time. Before we begin this discussion in earnest, I do want to offer to you that we made a slight change to the language in the policy report. We had a lot of really, really good discussion with our finance director, Roberta Byer, over the last couple of days. And it's more accurate to describe it as an agreement because there's several different components to it, such as acquiring equipment, licensing with a software, and that sort of thing. So lease is a little bit too specific. I'm not comfortable with that word. And so we're going to change that word as we go through the discussion to agreement as opposed to a lease, if everybody's okay with that. And then on the dais before the commission meeting, we made a slight change to the policy report in terms of the commission action. When we get to that point, if you're inclined to approve it, it would be just a little bit different than was outlined in the original policy report. Okay?
Sounds like a plan.
All right, so off we go. I'm joined tonight by a couple of different people. Our deputy chief, Major Nick Ademus, who was instrumental in working through this project. Roberta Byer from Finance was helpful in terms of, you know, the last couple of days. And we're also joined by Brandon Jones from Axon Incorporated. He flew in yesterday, Inspector, he flew in yesterday from Phoenix, Arizona. He's working with a number of law enforcement agencies in the area, including this project. And so if there are particular questions about the vendor that we're recommending, he'd be available to help us with that. So the Leavenworth Police Department is seeking approval for a sole source request for the replacement of our in-car cameras, which are 24 of them, body worn cameras, there are 50 of them, and interview room cameras. And there are three of them with Axon Enterprise Incorporated. And the amount, the total amount, if you would agree, would be $805,556.15. The agreement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated would be structured at a five-year term starting in January of 2026. Included in the policy report is the quote from Axon Incorporated. The first year in 2026 would be $177,222.35. Starting in 2026, the remaining four years of the agreement would be $157,083.46. Let me pause there very briefly and make sure that you understand that that is the intention of the police department to carry out this agreement. However, it is not something that you are committed to beyond approval. So for example, if in two years, the city of Leavenworth suffers some financial issues and we're not able to fund the project, there are provisions in the agreement that we would simply opt out. And so that's very important, that you are not under the impression that you're committing future commissions to do different things. Certainly, that's our intention. We identify the camera project as critical to us for public safety. I think the general public has an expectation now that police officers have body worn cameras. That helps in terms of pricing with the initial agreement, that sort of thing. But we wanted to make sure that it was a very important point, that that's our intention, but there's opportunity to get out of that if we had to for some reason. Okay? That was a very important point. The agreement includes the replacement of camera equipment, operating software, cloud storage, licensing, and third-party video support. It is an all-encompassing system that will provide camera equipment and storage and all of the stuff necessary to operate the system. Okay? So how did we get here from today? The police department formulated an evaluation committee that had a bunch of people from the police department, from the patrol division, detectives, evidence, some discussions with our prosecutor's office. We also had representatives from the IT department. Amy Peters and Matthew Ogilvy, who work at the police department, participated in those conversations and reviewed for us and were quite valuable in terms of helping us sort through the complexities of that. During the course of this project, we interviewed and reviewed five of the primary companies that provide this service to law enforcement. Axon Enterprises Incorporated, Motorola Solutions Incorporated, GTAC Incorporated, WatchGuard. And then we did do a reassessment of our current company, Coban, that provides the services that we have now. I'll talk a little bit about that. During the course of this year, you've probably heard me talk, you recall, I've talked about this a few times with you. We talked about that in goal setting. We talked about that in the budget hearings, and we talked about that. But I'll just remind you that, quite frankly, our current system is not functioning effectively. We've had several significant events in which we've lost video data and that we have not been able to recover. We've made some internal decisions to try and support that where we are doing better in that regard. But still, we've had issues with lost data. And by data, I mean evidence. And so there are circumstances now in which, if called to court to provide that, we've not been able to recover that data. Coban cannot provide us an explanation for why that's happened. And so we have lost confidence in them. And quite honestly, at this point, it might almost be better not to have body worn cameras if we can't rely upon them to produce that evidence and turn it over. And so it's critically important to change vendors and to provide that service, I think, that people expect. Okay? So in December of 2024, we met with representatives from GTAC. In January of 2025, we met with Axon Incorporated. Both of those companies provided very good presentations, and we were generally satisfied. In January, we also met with Motorola Solutions. We were slightly less satisfied with them. They were late to the presentation. We asked for a full demonstration of all of the capabilities, and he was only prepared to do half of that.
Oh, my.
Motorola Solutions is terrific at providing communications equipment. That's their area of expertise, and they're good at that. Everything else is a little less enthusiastic about that. We've learned that over the course of this last, recently sometime, Motorola Solutions stopped producing body worn camera equipment, got out of it, but they purchased WatchGuard, which is another company that provides that. And they're slightly less in terms of the evaluation criteria from Axon and GTAC. So it really came down to that. And so why is it that we selected Axon Incorporated? So we spent a great deal of time researching it. We needed to get some numbers available for the budget process. We made those presentations during the budget process, which we talked about. And so those numbers came from that original study. After the budget process was completed and you authorized the funding for the project in 2026, we really turned our attention to narrowing down who might be most representative for us, and that comes down to Axon Incorporated. And by that, I mean I've sent police officers to law enforcement agencies that have Axon Incorporated equipment. We've seen it work. We've verified the things that we were being told by Axon about what it does and how it functions. We found it to be probably the premier company and the most reliable product available into the body worn cameras. In addition to that, I'll share with you, there's a number of law enforcement agencies in the surrounding area. Lansing, Tongue, Yvonne, KCK, Shawnee, Lenexa, Overland Park, all of the sort of major law enforcement agencies around. Most of them have Axon Incorporated, and so we're able to draw on their experiences with them. A couple of things that Axon does that we find to be very valuable in terms of the moving forward, oh, it's here somewhere, with the things that they have available. Oh, thank you. Yeah, sorry. You might recall in our annual presentation to the commission with city goals, one of the things that we outlined that's important to us is using technology to help us combat crime. And this is what we believe to be going to contribute to us accomplishing that goal. So here's some things. Again, many agencies have it. We have found no negative feedback or any instances where Axon lost any data and can't recover it. They're very reliable in that. And they have a lot of innovative things that if you grant this, will allow us to do that. Let's talk about this. Axon has something called Community Request. Community Request is if an officer goes out to, for example, a burglary, and there is Ring camera video or cell phone video. The officer will be able to provide them a case number and a link to the Axon system and to the officer, and they will be able to submit that via their cell phone or they can email it to us directly to the officer and to the Axon system. The officer can look at it and evaluate it and associate it with the case. So we don't have to go back out and get the video. They can just send it directly to us through that link. That's an incredibly inventive piece of technology that we're going to take a great deal of advantage of. The evidence, the storage, collection of evidence is much easier in terms for the officers to collect it, store it, send it to the prosecutor's office, send it to our detectives for review. That system is very, 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 very robust, and we're very excited about that. The interview cameras that we have now in the Justice Center are sort of a separate system. And so we would disconnect those, and it would all be integrated. So the body cameras, the in-car cameras, and the interview cameras would all be part of one system and would be integrated, and so that's important. Each of the police cars would, in essence, be able to do, be the cameras at the intersections that we have. Each police car would be able to do that with the cameras if we so choose to do that. And that would be helpful in terms of our ability to identify stolen cars and that sort of thing.
So I'll go right to you guys. Is that right? It could be right to you guys if you wanted to look something up in the car?
Correct, yeah, correct.
That's good, that's good.
And then there's also a live feed video so that if there was a significant operation going on, but I was at headquarters or the deputy chief was at headquarters, and we wanted to see what was going on, we could sit there in the conference room or laptop and watch it. Or if I were, happened to be curious about how our officers are behaving out there when they're interacting with people, we could flip that on, and I could watch. I don't intend to do that a lot, but there's that capability that we don't currently have now. And I think that's important in terms of us just making sure that we're out there doing what we're supposed to be doing and behaving ourselves. There's some other things that we did not sign up for, but in the future, if we chose to, a translation feature to 50 or 60-plus languages. The officer is speaking to someone that speaks Spanish, for example, and that's their first language. They don't think the cameras have the ability to listen to that and translate it either in English or Spanish, so there can be better communication. And there's something like 50-plus languages in there. That's extra. We didn't ask for that. But that's something for the future if we felt like was valuable, would be important. It has the ability, this is also an extra called Draft One, which is the ability for all of the cameras that record everything. So an officer goes out on a domestic, and they are talking to people. The cameras are recording in the car, the cameras are recording on the body cameras. The ability to then come back and have AI generate the police report for them. So instead of the officer spending an hour on the call and then two hours writing the report, it's an hour on the call and maybe 10 minutes writing the report, freeing up that other hour for the officer to get back out there on the road and combat crime. Again, all of those features exist. They're extra. We didn't sign up for them. We're essentially asking for the basic package. But in terms of future, that's sort of where we're heading, and so this builds the infrastructure for that. So that's important. It also has something called the drone as a first responder. We have some drones out there, and we can tie the drones into the cameras and, you know, do some interesting work with that. Again, those are extra features that are available for additional funds. We wanted to put the basic package together and get everything going. So those are some of the reasons why it is that we narrowed it in on Axon and feel like it's the most appropriate thing for us. And so with that, the budget impact again. The city commission approved in the 2026 operational budget for the police department $181,355 for this project. The first year in 2026 would be $177,222.25. And then the years after that, it would be $157,083.45. Now, again, it's important to point out that we could opt out if we needed to do that. So to the dais there, the motion is slightly different than the lease agreement. And so I'd be asking for the commission to approve the master services and purchasing agreement together with the quote and the addendum, I'll talk about that in just a second, between the city of Leavenworth and Axon Enterprises Incorporated, which includes the allocation of $177,222.35 in 2026. The master services agreement is sort of a generic thing that Axon does with everybody. Mr. Waters has reviewed that agreement and added an addendum to that looking out specifically for the city of Leavenworth. Axon's had the opportunity to review that and agrees to that addendum with a few little bits of pieces. If you had questions, Mr. Waters can refer to that if you need to. But that's the end of my presentation and what we're asking you to do tonight. And we'll answer whatever questions you might have.
Sure. Sorry. What was the addendum?
Mostly involved some of the things that Chief was talking about, about the cash-based slot. We'll tell you your contracts and the ability to ensure that there is a nonappropriation provision in the later years so that you can, there's some statutory language that was in the contract, the boilerplate itself. Let me just say, Kansas statute has magic words that need to appear. So put that in there. I think there's a couple little things on, as an example, the basic form of the contract or the quote references the master purchase agreement as available online. I tend to not like those provisions because I don't know...
Well, we'll be online.
What was it online, certainly at one point. And so striking that to say instead, the agreement is the one attached here to as exhibiting.
No, I appreciate that. Yeah, I just had a curiosity, Pat. Is there any facial recognition using AI with those?
We are not signing up for that. They probably have, but we have not talked about that. I, too, have a lot of questions about that in terms of the reliability. Brandon's probably saying no.
Yes.
I'm not comfortable with that yet either. We don't use that. There are apps and certain things that other companies use, and we might have drawn on that. But no, we do not have the ability to do that, and we'll see how that goes.
Okay. No, I got you. I got you. Good job on the presentation, Brandon. I guess you knocked the socks off, so.
Moving forward.
Moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Quote expires 9/30/2025. This is now the 14th of October.
Right, we have a newer one.
Is it still good?
We're good.
Yeah, we have a newer one than that. But it added something, it added something in there about the drone thing, which they threw in for sort of free, but I didn't want to cloud it any further than it was. That's good. Right, Brandon?
Correct, yep.
That's correct.
Good catch, good catch.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any others. No.
If not, I'll entertain a motion. Say that one, yes.
I move for the commission to approve the master services and purchasing agreement together with the quote and the addendum thereto between the city of Leavenworth and Axon Enterprise Incorporated, which includes the allocation of $177,222.35 in 2026.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and... Been moved and seconded. Please begin voting, Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, he's acting city manager. He'll keep him up here.
All heads.
Next item on the agenda, first, consideration ordinance adjusting speed limits on certain roads. Oh, you're still here for that, too.
Yes, ma'am. I, Mayor Prochem, and Commissioners, these police departments before the governing body this evening, asking for you to place an ordinance on first consideration that makes in addition to Chapter 44 of the municipal code of ordinances, Article 3, Speed Limits, Section 44-61, adjusted speed limits. In the spring of 2025, we started to get some complaints from residents in the neighborhood of Valley View Road and Summit Road, which is just off Shrine Park Road there. Generally speaking, we have some protocols that we follow that evaluates that. The very first thing we do is go out and evaluate to see if people are speeding. We put a speed study device out there that gives us the opportunity to evaluate whether or not people are speeding. It's important, though, to remember that when we're making those evaluations, it has two components to it, one of which is whether there are actually people speeding. There generally is always speeding. It's a matter of, you know, how many people are speeding. The other piece of that, it gives us a sense of how fast people are actually driving out there. Because we use that information to determine whether or not we have the right speed limit set out there. And so we did, I think, about three weeks of evaluation out there, and the average speed for all of those cars out there in that neighborhood was about 17 and a half miles an hour. So that's an indication to us that the speed limit is currently 30. We should make a consideration to reduce the speed limit to 20 miles an hour. We also evaluate such things as the width of the road, the terrain, whether there's parking on both sides of the road, whether there's sidewalks. We evaluate all of that. And by we, I mean me, the police department, the traffic unit, Mr. Faust and his team over at the public works unit. And so at the conclusion of all of that, we did determine that it would be a reasonable decision to lower the speed limit from 30 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour in that location. And so we actually did get a formal request from one of the residences that live out there in September. So we're comfortable with that. We think that's a reasonable decision. And so I'd be asking you to place an ordinance on first consideration that adds the following language. Valley View Road from Shrine Park Road, 20 miles an hour, and Summit Street from Shrine Park Road to Valley View Road would be 20 miles an hour. And so I'll answer whatever questions you might have.
Just so the public knows this is, these are not through roads, thoroughfares.
Correct.
They wind around there off of.
Very narrow, wind around, some terrain issues. So yeah, that's a reasonable decision.
It is reasonable for that.
Right.
Almost a neighborhood road.
Right.
Okay. Does it have any other questions?
No.
Yes, sir.
Is there a need for notifying the public that this is going to happen, or is this the notification?
So usually, we don't do this very often, but when we do, when we make a significant change like that, what we will typically do is advertise. We'll go out there. We might put some flyers on cars. We'll put up the signs. And then for a while, 30 days or so, generally speaking, we will monitor out there. If we do happen to find someone that's speeding out there, we'll give them a warning. We'll sort of slow walk ourselves into the change, give people the opportunity to get used to it, and then after that, we'll see how it goes. And so, yeah, we'll take care of that.
And this is, this is consensus tonight, so.
Yeah.
It'll be here for a while so people can respond to us if they have any issues with this. I don't see that there's going to be any issues really on those streets.
I definitely see more requests coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To lower it.
Which is why we have the protocols, because we do get a lot of, and then ultimately what happens is the opposite usually happens, which there is speeding. And so we do need an enforcement component, which is more appropriate to solve that issue than a reduction of speed limit. So we're ready for that.
I got it.
But yeah, I feel, yeah, you're right.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Is there a consensus?
Yep, there is.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
All right. Yep, thank you. I, Mayor, move to approve the claims for September 19th, 2025, through October 9th, 2025, in the amount of $2,65,363.59, net amount for payroll number 19, effective September 19th, 2025, in the amount of $431,436.98, includes police and fire pension in the amount of $7,753.58, and payroll number 20, effective October 3rd, 2025, in the amount of $408,433.36, no police and fire pension.
Phew.
Yeah.
Vowful, boy.
I didn't talk that fast.
Oh, second.
Wait a second, yes. Okay. Please begin voting. Raise your hand.
Are you from New York?
No, sir.
Yes, he does.
Aye.
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 Okay. We pass. All right, going around the table, we have Acting City Manager, Chief Kitchens.
We have nothing.
You have nothing?
No, ma'am.
Nothing?
Nothing.
It's been quiet here, huh?
You keep saying that, ma'am, and it's only Tuesday. They don't return until next Monday.
That's right.
Don't jinx us, please.
I guess we just had a long weekend there. Assistant City Manager, Trevor.
I'm busy.
I know you are. I haven't heard from you.
I haven't heard anything from you, so I know you and see good.
Mr. Waters, anything?
I'll just say, I was happy to be in town last weekend for my Maculata High School 30th high school reunion and my mother's 60th.
Oh, my gosh.
High school reunion there.
That's great.
Stayed in my high school.
Oh, okay.
Stayed, yeah. I heard that there were several people, former students that stayed there.
Hanging out with my parents and their classmates.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Well, I've got an interesting question. I might laugh, but what is the official ordinance or law regulation around marijuana in Leavenworth specifically?
It is illegal.
Right?
The annual uniform public defense codes that we have, and there's a state statute, so it's illegal.
I've looked into this before for another city, and it's been my opinion that under current Kansas law as it stands now, that is not a state law that you can charter out of or change and such. I know some Johnson counties, especially right along the state line, have struggled with that. And they would say, well, it's right across the street. And I had to say yes, but right across the street is an entirely different state.
Right, right.
So it's currently, my opinion at this time is that cities do not have, Kansas do not have the ability to charter out or try that. Wichita tried it a few years ago, some decriminalization measures, and the Attorney General sued them and went on that. Some cities, I believe, and this is both my memory, so, you know, with that caveat, some cities have written into their codes, suggested penalties, asking courts to consider different penalties and things like that, or offering them broad, so they've tried to kind of work around that a little bit. But generally speaking, my opinion is that the cities don't have the ability to charter out of and adopt their own.
Okay. And to be clear, I'm not looking to decriminalize it at all. I smell it a lot, and it just seems like really this year, really smelling a lot of it.
I know what it smells like.
So I'm like. You know, I'll tell you, I rented a car, and a lady was telling me, she's like, oh, that smells like weed in there. I'm like, oh, that's what this is. And I, oh, I never forgot it. Yeah. So I'm just like, well, I, obviously, it's hard to enforce, of course, but I was just curious. I'm like, man, I'm just, I'm really smelling it around town.
Probably 50 times a year. I need to look, but about 40 or 50 times a year, we write a ticket for someone. If an officer does a traffic stop or something like that, and there's a blunt or some weed in the car.
So if you see something, then basically, yeah, okay. I was just curious. So thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Well, I know what it smells like.
So do I.
Only because one of my best friends, when I was a teenager, his mom was on the New York State Narcotics Addiction Control Commission.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, I got close to that stuff and almost got ill. And he said, you don't know what that is? No, I didn't. I don't have a whole lot, but I think we should join together and wish our city clerk.
Are we singing?
Happy birthday to you. 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 And we will not ask you how old you are. Because I know you're a lot younger than me.
Don't suggest she's 50, sir. That didn't go over well this morning.
You shouldn't do that.
Goodness.
Anything else?
That is all I have.
Commissioner?
Yes, everyone that is here from the Oxford House, I just want to say, yeah, thank you all for what you are doing. You are answer prayer to me personally, and you are an amazing asset to our community that is much needed. And I just want to say thank you all for saying yes to God's calling and sharing your story and not holding back, you know what I mean, moving forward, meeting the needs of our community. There are so many people that need your services, and I just want to say thank you all for providing services to everyone that's in need in our community. So God bless you all, and I appreciate everything that you are doing, and I will be there for the open house, and I encourage everybody to please go check it out. Me and my wife was just there on Sunday. It is beautiful. It is clean. It is nice. It is amazing, but it is welcoming to our community. So God bless you and thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Well, I just wanted to announce that our city trunk or treat is going to be on October 18th, on Saturday, and I can't remember the times.
Five to seven.
Five to seven. And while you're out there, what I really want to talk about, too, is, I mean, please come out. We always have such a good turnout, and it's so cool to see all the trucks there, the trunks there, with everybody dressed up and all of the, all the kids that come out. They just have a great time, and hopefully, the weather will be great for that. But while you're in the neighborhood, I just want to talk a little bit about Havens Park. And Havens Park is my favorite park. It is, people don't realize this, it's like 160 acres in our town, and there are multiple trails, and a lot of the trails have now been paved, and they're really nice. Bring your bikes, walk, bring your motorized bikes and stuff. You can't have anything bigger than that. Golf carts, whatever. I'd like to have a big parade out there sometime and just have people go around. Mopeds, I don't, anything, anything that you can, that you need to, to, to come out and see it, but especially to walk. At this time of year, it is at its most beautiful. And it is really, truly a gem for our community. And I can't remember now what vehicles we can actually have out there. Chief, so.
You can't get up to the top anymore, but the parks guys closed off the top. Yeah, no motorcycles or ATVs or anything off the top of my head, but let me look. It's been a little while since I've been asked that question.
Yeah.
We'll put something out, maybe in the next day or two about what's allowed up there.
But on the main, on the main area, when you come in, there's, our new bathrooms are there. And they're not new anymore. And then, yeah, they are kind of, it's kind of closed off there. And then you can walk and ride your bikes or whatever and just go all through the, and it's beautiful. You can, you can go to the upper, upper area, which is where I go, because I can't really walk that well yet, but upper area is more flat, and you can get off there and walk, walk in that way. You can go along the lower area, which is kind of flat, or you can go up steep hills, all, all kinds of steep hills. But the trail mob has done a great job of fixing trails up through there, too, and cutting wood and doing everything to building little bridges so, so that bikes can go all the way through the park. So that's my two cents tonight, and appreciate everybody coming tonight. And if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So I'm moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please begin voting.
Aye.
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 Aye.[1749.46]